Let's go then, let's roll.
Okay.
Let's get it done. I move we return to open session.
Second.
Catherine.
Aye.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
I move we adjourn the closed session.
Second.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Catherine.
Aye.
Follow the roll please.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Here.
Catherine.
Aye.
Scott.
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance please? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Interview with, for boards of commission, human rights, Steel Welchr. Steel, are you here? Please come forward and tell us why you would like to serve on the Human Rights Commission.
Well, I had one term already that's concluding this month and I'd like to go for another term. Name's Steel Welchr. Work at Western Iowa Tech. And due process and civil rights, very important to me. I think it's important to most people in Sioux City and I like the work that the commission's done already and I'd like to continue with a small part in that.
How many openings do we have Lisa?
There were three vacancies.
Yes.
And?
Six applications.
Thank you. Six applications.
Okay.
We still have one more interview though. So it will be after until I can before I ask for preferences on that.
This is the second time you're applying? Or you've been offered?
I have one term already.
You've had one term, okay.
And I'm looking for.
We have so many trees.
I think that the commission's seen a lot of growth. Do you see any more direction or anything new you'd like to implement it or anything?
Yeah, they've had a lot of great success recently with Faces of Sioux Land, just having numbers, getting out into the community, having people come to them for different events. Their Civil Rights Academy has garnered quite a bit of attendance for multiple sessions.
Yeah.
So, you know, Karen and Lana have done a great job and volunteer commissioners have a small part in that as well, but it's mostly the folks that have been working there and their outreach. You know, a lot of the cases and investigations that they conduct are fair, they're impartial, but what you see is that the individuals, they don't have the evidence. So, there's a lot of no probable cause findings, just because if the two types of cases that they look at the most would be employment discrimination cases and housing and it's just a fact that the landlord's going to have more records than the tenant and that the HR department is going to have more detailed records than the employee. So, you just have to look at the evidence and oftentimes you find out that there's just not enough to go on even though their claims may be plausible and it's unbelievable, there's not enough evidence. So, if we can work to find out ways to kind of tell people that they need to get things in writing and get things recorded or gather evidence even though if it's something that's may have happened years in the past, they should hold on to whatever evidence they can find because the other player, you know, the other people, they have people whose sole job is to keep those records for evidence.
So maybe education about that.
Need to work on encouraging people to keep their evidence and educating them on what they need to do with that.
Thank you.
Thanks for reapplying.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move to the consent agenda, which is items three through 18D today. You can consider that they'll be passed unanimously unless a separate roll call votes called for by a council member. If you want to speak on an item on the consent agenda, please come up as I read it and state your name and address so that it can be used for later. And if you want to come up on, or an item not on the agenda, please come up under Citizen Concerns. I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the city council minutes of June 19th, 2017. Four is a resolution supporting a submission of the IEDA application for the workforce housing tax credit program for Apache View Townhouses LLC. Motion, five is motion accepting annual evaluation of the Art Center Director by the Art Center Board of Trustees. Six is a resolution establishing fees for Parks and Rec Department at the Cone Park.
Matt, I have a question for you on that please. Just a couple of questions. One is just an overall picture of the fees. At first when I saw these fees, I thought they were a little on the high side and then you had a couple of reasons in there about what they are and why they're set at where they are. And then I wanted to confirm that you had the Parks and Rec Board review these fees and approve those.
Matt Salvatore, Parks and Recreation Director, yes, the Cone Park Advisory Board did approve these on our June 6th meeting. As you remember, the feasibility study that we had conducted before the park, before we had started with designs of the parks recommended $15 per person and we just thought that was way too high. So, we wanted to provide some affordable rates. We did a survey of all the different tubing hills in the Midwest and this would come in the second lowest in the region. And this also would include ice skating fees in addition to the tubing. So, you're getting a lot of value for the money.
And separated them in case someone wants to do one?
Yeah, yeah. If somebody wants to just ice skate, then they would, they would have the ability to do that at a lower rate.
But the Parks and Rec Board did a?
Unanimous.
Review these and did approve them. And there's no quantity discount. I'm thinking like if I bring a family of four children and seven grandchildren.
That's something that we would like to take a look at in the future, in future years or offer a punch card or something. We just kind of want to see how it goes the first year and make sure that we're covering all of our costs. We do have a loan income pass included for those that qualify. So, it's 20% discount for those that qualify similar to swimming pools.
Okay, so for an evening event, $7?
For, yeah, Monday through Friday.
And then weekends it goes to $8.
$8 and then the afternoon session is 10, just to spread out the crowds on the weekends.
Okay, and the ice skating fees are what we charge now at the?
$5, similar to IBP Ice Center, $3 for skate rentals.
Okay.
So, it's just $2 more to tube during the week.
Thank you.
I had a couple of questions too Matt, thanks. The first one I was thinking, I didn't see anything in the contractor, I haven't read. Is there any exclusivity to the catering at the shelter house? I mean?
No, or they could arrange whatever catering services they wanted.
Okay, but there won't be any exclusivity?
Nope.
And there's one staff person when they rent?
Correct. They'll keep an eye on the building and they'll be responsible for the cleanup after the party.
Wow, so that one person would do all the cleanup even if we had an event for 75 people or?
We would expect people to pick up garbage, put everything away, but the cleaning itself would be by one person. We'd bring in help if needed.
Dan and I are starting to think like, which is scary, but just making sure that there are recycling bins there, that'd be?
Sure.
Oh, the other question I had was, I appreciate the affordability of it. I'm really grateful that we would be able to offer this amenity at that cost. The worry I have is just upkeep, maintenance, things like that. Can you talk to me a little bit about the fee structure of how many dollars would be going towards that? Where is the funding coming? You know, because I just worry about that. I worry about the maintenance. I worry about making sure that we're keeping it high quality and?
Right, so we have an?
In the future.
We have an operating budget for the park and we structured that in a way for this to be at least a break even venture. So, we want to provide all the necessary maintenance and repairs and do it at a break even standpoint for the facility.
Okay. And so, we think that with these numbers and this structure, it will be that?
That's our hope, yes.
Okay, and then I guess we can revisit it if?
Something that we're going to have to reevaluate after the first season and see where we're at.
Yeah, for sure. Okay.
Matt, I appreciate all that survey information. It was very helpful and I think the prices are reasonable and hopefully it'll lend itself to a lot of people using?
Yeah.
The facility.
Thank you. It was a helpful process just to go through for establishing the fees, so.
You bet. Thanks.
One last thing, I would really appreciate too, looking into different fee structures as far as like Dan's saying, if there was a family pass or an annual pass or an annual punch card or something where you know what I mean, you pay a certain price, you get a discount and you can go 12 times in a year or something.
Yes, we've had lots of discussions about that. We kind of want to see how it goes the first year. We anticipate the weekends being very crowded.
Yeah.
So, at least one opportunity that we could think of is maybe during the week offering an annual pass and then having just the drop in fee on the weekends. So, those are all things that we're going to evaluate, the punch cards, the annual passes, the weekday passes and those sort of things.
I just want to make sure that when we're promoting this or press releases or stuff are saying that we recognize that that might be wanted and we're looking at that in the future, but we want to get through the first season to see where?
Correct.
I just want to make sure that that is out there and people aren't upset.
Yep. Matt, if you find these fees cannot keep up with the maintenance though, would you provide in a budget for us to consider some kind of a fund or funding of a maintenance fee?
Yeah.
Or not maintenance fee, but just a maintenance fund of some kind. So, the money would be there because sometimes we get accused of build it and move on to the next project and ignore us there. And I want to make sure we do have the money to make?
Yeah, council member Mark, our goal is to make this a self-supporting operation, not one that requires taxpayer subsidies. I appreciate that.
I know that might be the intent, but?
We will build our rates to meet that goal.
Yeah, but there's, but there's the, we've gone through this before. There's that balance between rates that people can afford and what the city taxpayers should be doing to maintain the property. Otherwise, we'll just price ourselves right out of the market and you don't have to worry about maintaining it because no one's going to be using it.
And one thing that I love about this project is it's, the maintenance costs are relatively low. I mean, we have a high pressure water main for the, for the snowmaking equipment. We'll be replacing nozzles on the snow guns every once in a while. There'll be some expenses with the refrigeration, but from what I've heard from people in the industry, that the park itself is very sustainable and it's brand new and we won't, hopefully have a lot of long-term costs.
Well, one thing you could do is put a dollar a ticket away like you do at the Tyson in a reserve fund so you know you have it to draw on.
A reserve fund is what I couldn't?
Then it won't go in the big black hole.
Kind of hit on the, on the fact that we got the, we had a donor that gave us about $300,000 for the ice rink?
$200,000. That donor will be officially announced at the June 10th or July 10th council meeting. So, we were very fortunate. The refrigeration part, the ice skating was made possible through that large contribution and we're going to raise the rest of the money privately. We've written a grant to bridge the gap. And it just opens up all kinds of different possibilities for the park.
Yeah, this is huge and we'll thank the donor when that time comes.
You'll have the opportunity July 10th.
Yep.
And I agree with what the city manager is saying, but I do think there's a balance there. I mean, I agree with what you're saying. The concept is that the fees will be enough to maintain, but then there's going to be that point that you, you go over that and I just want to be prepared, better prepared than we are in some cases.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. One last thing that I would ask too is, in the offseason, has there ever been any talk about making it a slip and slide or anything like doing?
We've had lots of crazy ideas that have, we've been shown examples about and been ideas brought to us. So, we can take a look at those things.
We just need to be very careful that we don't do anything that compromises its use in the winter.
Yeah.
Right.
Sure.
And it's nice having the free splash pad in the offseason and the rental possibility. So, it truly is a year-round park. And then the recreational trail that goes all the way around the outside.
And I know you're doing this, but if I let the meeting go without saying it, I'll be disappointing myself, but make sure the city attorney and you, we've covered the liability part of all of this.
Yes.
Because I mean, there're going to be accidents. I hope not, but what are the chances are with this kind of a opportunity that's being presented to us? And I just want to make sure we're prepared for liability issues that could?
As a part of the operating budget, we're looking at a additional insurance policy for the tube park itself. And we've been talking to Don Trowmeter about that.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks Matt.
Thank you.
Good job.
I probably wanted to stay up here.
Seven is motion accepting the recommendations of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for the Cook Park improvements.
My name is Jessica, J.E.S.S.I.C.A. Monnell, M-O-N-E-L-L. Live at 2500 Isabella Street in Sioux City. So, basically the recommendations for the splash pad have been presented to you all and I assume that they'll be going forward. Although I think the timing of the splash pad should be pushed out further, I don't have a problem with the splash pad. I'm also for the recommendations for the Parks Board regarding upgrades to the park itself such as updating the basketball courts and the footsole court. I'm excited to see the improvements in the park, but I'm worried the improvements won't come for a few years or even next year, which may leave a splash pad an undesired asset to the park. Currently, this park is in need of basic amenities, a park that size should have. Working restrooms, garbage units and working lights for safety. The skate kids also go there all day without a working water fountain. I know this issue has come up before, but what will the splash pad users use as a restroom during those hours? You could put a porta potty there, I suppose, but I imagine the transients would tip it or something. What solution does the city have to keep transients from using the splash pad during the day? What suggestion does the city have to keep intoxicated adults from using it after hours or other vandalizations during after hours? I hear so many residents of Sioux City complain about the pools, so many people complain, don't show up to the meetings here or many other meetings for that matter. So, now we have another splash pad going up in the city. We also still have a pool and that's not why I'm here. I don't want to talk about the pool. My request today is to remove the demolition of the, of the pool and maybe put it off for the future in hopes that the park can turn itself around in the next couple of years with the improvements and along with the splash pad be opened at a later date years to come from now. And maybe the people that are so quick to say there's nothing for kids to do in Sioux City or to say that taking away the pool leaves the older kids to find trouble, the city residents need to understand what use it or lose it means here. I've had many interactions with Matt and other officials in the city regarding how I'd love to see the space used. Some of what I've been pushing for is in the plans such as the updating the basketball courts and the footsole courts. I think the skate park gets left out a lot too and those are, those kids, what they would like at the park and they think they should have been asked. I have so many more improvements I would like to see as just a more well-rounded park space, maybe like a funplex of sorts. Cook Park can be a place where different groups of people come together and enjoy positivity, respect and creativity. My objective for speaking today is to encourage the city council to see the potential the park could have in the future and allow more funding for this park. The future of this park is important because this area of Sioux City needs some love, just like the park does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I sit now?
You can.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions for me or?
You know, I, just a point of clarification, are you asking council to keep the pool and do the splash pad at a later time or are you saying?
Ideally, I could see a pool working along with a splash pad in the future. I think if you put a splash pad there currently, it would be an unsuccessful splash pad. I think the park is just, has so many issues going on with it. I don't see it being a safe option down there.
Okay.
As a parent, I would not go down to the park and sit with my food on the grass and enjoy a splash pad in the current state. So?
What do you mean in the current state? What do you mean by that?
Um, there's just too much, there's too many homeless, too many intoxicated, you know, the restrooms are in disarray. You can't, you know, trails to walk through there would be something simple and nice. You could keep police going through there, you know. They have to drive all the way around to get to the park. There's just a lot going on there. You know, I think there's a lot of underlying issues that, you know, need to be addressed before a splash pad could be somewhere where a family would want to take their kids. So?
Matt, could you come up? Could you maybe just talk a little bit about the advisory committee, the recommendation or what your thoughts are, some of the concerns that maybe she brought up?
Yeah, I'll give you a little background. We actually had two public input meetings on this splash pad in particular and by the end of the second meeting, we didn't really have a consensus. The only consensus was to do a survey and we were going to base the decision on what to do at the park, either in place of the splash pad or to move forward with the splash pad itself. But now the results of the splash pad are back and the residents that were in this area were asked, what would you like to see as a replacement for the pool? And the splash pad was number one. So, I see it's difficult not to, not to move forward with that recommendation. That's what the park board felt, given that was the desire of the residents that live near that park. And then another couple of the issues that I'll address, the bathrooms there, although they're vandalized on a regular basis, they are functioning. They're right near where the future splash pad would be. And then to control the use, obviously it's, the splash pad's on a timer. So, at eight o'clock at night, the splash pad turns off and the water's not able to be activated by any of the users.
And can you talk a little bit about the timeline? You're thinking for other improvements like the football and the basketball and stuff?
We was planning on budgeting for those for next fiscal year. If we don't have the funds, any leftover funds from this project, we'd like to use to fund those two improvements, basketball courts and the footsole. And we have ordered a couple soccer goals for the park that will be delivered here sometime in the summer. But those were, those are things that we would like to do right away. We just don't have the funds to do them all right now.
The funding is in place for the splash pad though?
Correct.
I think that survey got, it was one that was sent out to the residents in the area and only 20 something got sent back.
The mailer, yeah. And then Tiffany and the West Side Coalition did an outstanding job of delivering those door to door and we were able to capture the data that we needed.
Which pool obviously was the right and number one answer because it was left for right in. The next one was splash pad, but a baseball and skating were top contenders too. So?
And we have done improvements to the skating, the skate park two of the last three years. We've added a couple of features. There is a backstop there for softball, baseball activities. There's a big open green space for soccer. That's why we ordered the goals. There is a great following for basketball and footsole. That's why we want to include those improvements in the future at the park.
But there's no working lights at the park and there's no garbage cans and the basketball courts are just a mess. So, I just, the park is just in need of a lot. And I have some friends that skate down there. One's here, if, you know, he wants to do anything, he can. But as a user every day, you know, I don't think they want the splash pad. Is it going to be next to the skate park?
It would be proposed to be at the site that the current pool is located.
So, that becomes an issue too. So, I just, I don't have a problem with splash pads per se, but you know, I know the pool issue's been dead for a while and you guys don't want to talk about it. But I just think to hold off on the demolition and turn the park into a successful space. You know, there's other assets in the area, you know, the Pearl Street Park's going up, West Seven's being remodeled. It just can be a cohesive, nice funplexes.
And I think that's what ultimately this council and Matt, Parks and Rec would want to have as well. I mean, we're just, we're, our hands are somewhat tied in the fact that while we have the funding for the splash pad, we should, if that's what they're saying that they would like to do, the surveys are collected. I mean, I want to move forward in that direction. I also want to give love and attention to those basketball courts and to the footsole. Is that how you pronounce it?
Yep, that's right.
Sure. That court, because I went over there. I was texting Matt yesterday about this project and I went and I drove over there and there were kids playing soccer in the tennis courts, just like you said there would be, and there were people playing basketball and a ton of skaters there. I mean, I saw all of that and I want, but you got to wait for funding as well. You know what I mean?
Right.
If we had endless amounts of fun, funds, yeah, I would love to just pour a lot of money there. But at the end of the day, we have funding for the splash pad and I think that's a good first step. But hopefully then we can really take care of other things in the future as well. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. I just don't agree with her.
And this splash pad would include a fence around the outside. I don't know how much good that would do, but it would provide a little bit of a barrier between the splash pad and the rest of the park.
I just think there's so many at-risk kids in that area and we need more for older kids to be able to do within walking distance. A lot of their families don't have multiple vehicles or if a parent's at work. And there's not a lot for these kids in the west side to do. And this is the only park that they have within their, their range and to put a little kiddie splash pad there to start, it just, I could see it working in the future more so than if it were put in place now. So, that's why I wanted to speak about that. So?
I think we're looking at the entire park because we've said that at an earlier meeting this year when we, and the mayor brought that up, that we need to look at the entire park and making the improvements along the lines of what you're outlining, but we're also mindful of it needs to be secure. And that was my concern when we talked about it during the budget process. So, I don't want to do away with the swimming pool and have a splash pad if it's not secure and as safe as the swimming pool has been. But you're telling me it will be because it's going to be fenced, but, but it's open. I mean, there's no?
There, we just don't have the staffing component like you would have at a swimming pool.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question. If you're putting it there, why, why would we demolish, are we going to demolish the bathhouse?
Oh, that was the plan.
I wouldn't, and then we'll, then we'll have complaints that we don't have restroom facilities.
We have, there is a restroom right, right near there.
A ways away.
Oh, sir. I can show you.
I think I know where it's at.
Couldn't we renovate the?
Bathhouse, really? How do you zoom in?
Restrooms are right here.
Yeah, where's the pool?
Right here.
Okay.
Restrooms are right here.
Where's the bathhouse?
Right to the?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, and will the, because the splash pad then will be circled by a fence and then to go to that restroom, you'd have to go outside of the fence and go all the way over to the bathroom.
That restroom is not safe.
I wonder if there would be an opportunity to renovate or what that cost would be, you know, if the bathhouse is somewhat operational or how much it would take. I'm assuming lines are ran to it. I've never been there. I don't know.
Right, yeah. The utilities are there, but it's a, it's a constant target for vandalism.
Yeah.
But that wouldn't be any different than at the, at the, at the bathhouse. If we have a bathhouse there, then?
Twenty-seven respondents, is that what it was?
Yes.
What were the totals in terms of who wanted the basketball court, who wanted the splash pad, who wanted?
We just did an average of the responses. So, we wanted, we ranked them one through seven. And so, one was the highest priority, seven was the least. The next highest was basketball at 2.52. And then the third response was a combination splash pad basketball at, you do a smaller scale splash pad with the basketball court at 2.55. So, splash pad was clearly number one.
And what does 1.98 represent?
Average of the highest. So, the, we asked them to rank things from one to seven. So, one, number one, you would list as your highest priority?
Okay.
Yep.
So, okay. How would you update the basketball court if you were going to do that?
We would actually probably flip-flop, you can't see this very well, but the basketball courts, tennis courts, we would convert into basketball courts and then we would create the, turn the basketball courts into footsole courts and put down some artificial turf on top of the concrete, the pavement right there.
Would it just be one court or two?
It'd be one, that's what they currently do at the tennis courts now is one footsole court. So, it'd be one large footsole court bigger than what they would have.
But basketball would play on?
Basketball would be two courts.
Okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it make sense, I know the Parks Board doesn't want to hear this, but it would certainly make more sense to me that we would, because you can always borrow ahead on a project like we did basically in Leeds. Wouldn't it make sense to do some of the stuff right now that you have money for and flip your deal and do the splash pad in the spring because you're not going to get any use out of the splash pad now? But if you got the going on it, you could get some use out of the other stuff because some of that, they can play all the way through till the snow flies. some of that, they can play all the way through till the snow flies.
By the time the splash pad, we'd have to bid it out, obviously. And by the time it would finish completion, we'd be into next fiscal year. So it's something that we could possibly do.
Well, it just seems to me we're missing a year of amenities, which I don't really want to do.
I agree.
Personally.
We would, yeah. Using the funding that's in place right now, you could move forward with the footsall and the basketball. You just have to budget accordingly for FY19.
For the splash pad?
For the splash pad.
Could you still demo, do you have the money to demo the pool this fall, then?
Yes, but we do, there's some...
It would be even better. I'm going to practice, I'm practice law, and I'm going to practice engineering. But letting a site sit all winter, Mr. Ellis, is better than going right on a site you just took up, isn't it?
It makes, not a tough one. It's a yes or no.
Makes sense.
Well, I'll hire, don't charge us for it. I'll hire guns. Doesn't that make more sense? Because your settling's going to occur all winter.
Yeah, it would, it would make sense. And then there's some power issues. There's a transformer box in here, along with the mechanical area for the pool. And that power controls a lot of the different things at the park. So before demo can takes place, we want to have an engineer take a look at that and make recommendations on what we need to do to make sure the power is available to other parts of the park.
Can I add to that point real quick, on what you were saying? If, in this instance, maybe we could send out a citywide survey or expand?
No, we're, we're...
Not doing that?
No, we're surveyed out. I think, I think we understand from this survey that it's probably what the neighborhood, well, I mean, it's pretty obvious. The people are voting with what they play up there. And they play basketball, and they play this other game. And so to me, they, they voted, at least the kids have, that they would like that stuff pretty fast, because they're not playing on the best of surface right now. So that's why I'm proposing that you flip-flop it and do it that way. That would, because we don't lose any momentum that way.
We would have done all three eventually anyway. It's just what order we want to do it.
Could the skate park maybe get some shelter, then?
That's something we got to take a look at, yeah.
Once there's a splash pad, that's just a big drinking fountain.
That's something we can take a look at. So you, you're thinking there's a need for shade and a drinking fountain?
Well, they have two trees, but, I mean, that's not shelter. That's just nature growing there. So it'd be nice if they could have some shelter. A drinking fountain would be good.
Sitting underneath that and watch their kids, that's a pretty good...
And at the splash pad, you can't see very well, but there is a shelter, right? Future splash pad, there's a shelter right there. This is a much smaller one than Leeds.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's not going to accommodate like the Leeds one.
Well, and some shelter would be helpful, because when I went out there yesterday, I saw at least three cars where parents were sitting in their cars, watching the kids on the skate park. You know what I mean? Trying to get some air or something, but...
And that's another benefit of this site. You have the parking lot.
Yeah.
And you have the restrooms where, that's something we struggle with at Leeds.
Well, would you take that, I mean, we can pass the, because...
I don't think the Park Board would have a problem with...
The Park's doing some recommendations, right?
Yeah, you're just approving a motion, but if you, I don't think the Park Board would have a problem if you flip-flopped it. Basically, we're just moving forward with everything which we want to do anyway. So I don't think the Park Board would have a problem with that.
Anyone else be heard?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm Tiffany Leckbann, T.I.F.F.A.N.Y., L.E.C.K.B.A.N.D., 1219 West Sixth Street. I want to thank Matt for the opportunity again to do that survey. Coming back from doing the survey, it may say 400 and some were surveyed, but unfortunately, that's a lot of empty lots up in that area. None of the businesses were really included in that area. And then I did get a lot of complaints from people on the opposite side of Hamilton Boulevard, because it only went up to Hamilton and not, not good with direction. So I would say west of Hamilton, where Myrtle, Rebecca, and all that is, none of them guys were surveyed. Neither was going up on the other side of 19th Street. I had some complaints up there that they never got it. I had a lot of fun during, doing that survey, getting out on foot and actually talking to the residents. Even though on the survey, it said the pool was not an option, the pool is actually the one that won the survey. I'm not sure that anything was mentioned to that, because it shouldn't have been, per their survey. The pool won the survey. A lot of people said they do not come down and use that pool because of the traffic in and out, or they don't simply have kids to use it, or the expense that it costs. And the people in that area don't make the money to pay two and $3 to go swimming. Also, I just, again, would love the city to think about long-term. I love the splash pad idea, too, but I think you're going to get too many in Sioux City, and you're not going to get them used either. I'd love the idea to see if there couldn't be a way to postpone that demolition again. Although Bob did, I believe it was him, make a good point, that, you know, having the ground there for a while and then building on it is better than fresh ground. I think I've heard that before, too. But I ask you to wait. Wait until you build that park out in Singing Hills, that water park, because then the plans are to get rid of Lewis and Leaf as they deconstruct on their own. Right now, Cook Pool is a sound pool. All it needs is a filter and some roofing. The pool itself is sound. It has a deep end, meaning people can jump in, no matter what your height is, and you can swim. Once you take away Leaf and Lewis, you no longer have that in Sioux City, because Riverside is only five foot, I think, at the deepest. You're going to have kids jumping in Perry Creek. You're going to have them jumping in Missouri River. It's centrally located. It's located where the poorer kids are. If you could cut that cost in half. There's lifeguards that didn't reapply this year, because Cook Pool was closed. Riverside is already sending home lifeguards because of low census. So there is other options out there. I just would hate to see us pay all this money to deconstruct a sound pool, when in the future, there may be use for that pool still. There's a big parking lot there that a splash pad could go on and still have room to park. There's a lot of area in that park a splash pad could go on. That was the second one that won. There was people that said they could see people using it, because, again, it's free water, and kids in the area need it. So I just wanted to remind and make one-ditch effort, because a lot of drugs in that park. Some of the people using park there might have been drug dealers, because that's how they do it. If that could get cleaned up, I know there's Sioux City PD. It's hard on them, because it's hard to catch them. You know, it's hard to get people to call that in. But it is a must for restrooms. I mean, those restrooms, if you can't keep those safe, how are you going to keep a splash pad? You know, right now, the Cook Pool is a locked entrance. It's only open when staff is available. That's not the idea of a splash pad. So you're going to be spending a lot more money in that area on that splash pad for upkeep. Not that I want to get rid of it for the kids that deserve it, but that's the thought process. The one at Dale Streets had to be repaired already, you know, and that's not even that many years old. Look at what happened to Miracle Field and Nerves. I mean, who would hurt something that's charity, that helps special needs kids, but they're out there? And right now, Cook Pool is the place for transient, drug dealers, everything to happen. So again, I think the best water option is something that's monitored by city staff to, to keep it going, to be able to take advantage of it. And honestly, I think a reduced pool is a better option to see how that goes, and how much traffic would go through there, especially leaving a deep end in Sioux City. So, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Riley Bissarich. I live at 2808 Jackson Street. And I just wanted to retouch on cleaning up the park before putting in a splash pad. My brother skates every day. He probably spends 40 hours a week at the park. I frequented it a lot, just to watch him. And I've got an eight-year-old brother that won't go near the bathrooms. They're completely disgusting. If you put a splash pad in, kids might have to go to the bathroom, but they can't go to the bathroom in a bathroom that they are afraid to use. It would have to be completely kept up. And I've been to the Leeds splash pad and the Dale Street one, and it's mostly moms and kids that go. And there are so many drug dealers and bad people at the skate park, I wouldn't feel safe bringing a four- or five-year-old kid and their friends to the splash pad to hang out if there's weirdos hanging out. It just would be bad and wouldn't make any sense to put something in that wouldn't be being used. And with how bad the bathrooms look, if you just walked in there, it'd be very hard to imagine kids that took the time to vandalize a bathroom wouldn't sit after eight o'clock, when the whole splash pad's turned off, and be like, "Well, there's a nice, clean place for us to vandalize." There used to be, we've been to every skate competition for the past three years. There was a bench. The first year, it was okay. Second year, could barely sit on it. It's not there anymore. The, there's nowhere to sit around, because nobody that goes to the skate park, other than to skate, can keep anything clean or keep it nice. I think before anything happened to the splash pad, the whole, would there need to be fixing of the bathrooms? The police would have to come around, because there are homeless guys that just walk up to you and ask you for cigarettes, for drugs. And I don't think I look like somebody that would have drugs, just hanging out at the skate park to watch my brother skate. The skate competitions are once or twice a summer, and that's when everybody comes together and is the safest feeling, because there's so many people there.
Are these competitions at, at Cook Park?
Right, that. We'll put, like, Dave Hall's putting the one on this year. Last year, Sayer was open, the skate shop, and they put it on that year and the year before. But it's hard to put one on when the park gets vandalized. There's two trashcans, like, city big trash bins, and that's it. And they don't get taken away every week, like most garbage cans. They sit there for a couple weeks full. So then, there's litter everywhere. There's nowhere to put your trash when you're there.
Hmm.
I just don't think it would be in the best interest of the city to spend a bunch of money on a splash pad, when there's so many other things there to be taken care of, because a splash pad wouldn't last. It would have to be kept up more than any of the other splash pads. I couldn't imagine, when you sit at Leeds, you can sit there and not see any people sitting and doing drugs. If you sit at the skate park for three or four hours, I guarantee you'll see somebody do some sort of drugs while you're there.
You mentioned Leeds. Have you been out to Leeds?
I've been to both the other splash pads.
You seen people selling drugs out there?
No, I haven't. So it'd be hard to imagine going, wanting to go to a different one, where you would see somebody selling drugs, if there are two other splash pads, three other, however many there are.
I would think that the, that the police kind of do a right, right around.
I don't see cops often. Maybe once or twice a day. It's hard when there's no streets inside the skate park. The skate park's pretty far away from the street.
We've got a parking lot.
Right.
Well, that's one reason why we wanted to do the, the basketball courts and maybe soccer, and, you know, get these kids moving around a little bit.
I would agree with that. And to also speak on that, we live on 28th and Jackson Street. There's no other skate parks in town. So kids that frequent the skate park live all over town, not just on the West Side. So I understand you don't want to do another survey. However, it's not just kids in that little, tiny chunk of town going to the skate park. There's kids from Warrington.
Well, I'm convinced, I'm going to vote against a splash pad, because it's obvious that nobody knows what they want in these parks. And, and I'm not going to vote for $278,000. We'll just fix up the park and make some trails through there and do the best we can do.
Right. I would also like to say, I don't know who the surveys went to, but the kids that are there, between 10 and 20 years old, there's no parents there. So I can't imagine they know what their kids want.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, we're going to go on to a motion accepting the recommendations of the Park and Rec Advisory Board on the, for the Carlin Park improvements. Nine is, oh, come on up.
I'm not sure, but are we voting?
Consent.
I'll move we defer, number seven.
I second.
We'll need a date certain for deferral.
Two.
To July 10.
Yeah.
You are? Oh, Alex has gone the 10th.
Seventeenth.
No, the consent agrees.
July 17.
Seventeenth. Call the roll, please.
Kay?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Crickin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
All right, now we're on number eight.
Hey, my name is Terry Rose. It's T.E.R.R.Y.R.O.S.E. And I live at 4510 Central in Leeds. And I went to the, the first meeting that they had for Parks and Rec about putting in the basketball court. Well, we went over everything in there, and they tabled it that day, because there were several people that were against it, because the, the surveys that went out showed that the top three were not a basketball court. And anyway, the second one, I didn't make it to the meeting, and that's when they pushed it through. But everybody I've talked to doesn't want a basketball court there. They would rather have just maybe a small shelter, or picnic tables, or even some playground equipment, but not, you know, a basketball court. And that area really isn't too feasible for the, the people that live in that area. So that's why I'm against it.
What do you mean, not feasible?
How many, I mean, check the, check the people that were, that live in Leeds. Most of them are not teenage kids that are going to be up there playing basketball. A park, for them, it should be a place where they could eat, go have a picnic, maybe, or, you know, have a little walk area, some walk trails. A lot of people walk up through there, but there aren't too many that go up there to play basketball. And the top three, none of those were a basketball court, from the survey.
I can clarify a couple things. The, the Park Board talked at length at this, at their June meeting. And after the initial discussion in May, they, leading into the June meeting, they'd received four letters of support for the basketball court, because they were, some local neighborhood members were worried that the basketball court wasn't going to happen. One of those letters of support was also from the Leeds Community Club, that would love to see that happen. So the thought process, based on the survey results, was to do three of the top four amenities from the survey. Number one was playground, number two, picnic shelter, and then number four was the full-length basketball court. Number three was a dog park, but the dog park would have taken up most of the space. So the thought was to do three out of the top four and create a nice little park setting at Carlin Park, where the Leeds swimming pool used to, used to be located.
So your plan is to do all three?
Yes, three of the four. Yep, three out of the top four.
So what's wrong with the plan, if that's what the plan is?
Terry's not in favor of the basketball court.
My understanding was that's just, they're just going to put a basketball court up there.
And it's willing to provide that at no cost to the city. That's the first thing that would happen. But we would, eventually, would like to move forward through the CIP process with the, of the playground and a picnic shelter. So that wouldn't be the only thing at the park. We'd have up to three things, and some benches, and some plantings, and those sort of things.
So outside of the free offer for the basketball court, there's no funding to do any of the other things?
Not, not currently. That's something that we would, we're planning on...
In 18, will there be, after July 1?
No.
No?
So it would have to be for the following fiscal year.
There'll be a splash pad in Cook Park, so you can probably move some there, but...
We do have $15,000 for Leeds, but that's, that's it.
But you've got this other deal being donated?
Yes, Sunny Brook Church.
Yeah, the church.
Correct.
Does that sound okay, Terry? We do all three?
Not from what I talk to people. They don't want the basketball court. They, the top two were the playground equipment and, you know, a shelter thing, but not a basketball court.
Well, it's donated for free. I mean, why not?
Well, and if they still get playground equipment, they still have a shelter.
That's not what the people in Leeds wanted. They didn't want the basketball court there.
Well, we're kind of hearing both sides here, so...
The survey said it was number three?
Number four.
Number four, yeah.
The basketball court was the number four?
Yes, three, yes, number four. So we'd be doing three out of the top four items selected from the survey. And the dog park wouldn't, wouldn't go there, just because that takes up a lot of non-space.
So Sunny, was it Sunny Brook?
Sunny Brook Church.
They jumped in and said that they'd pay for the whole thing. So I'm guessing that they must have quite a few people that would be interested in the courts. Why, why would they do it?
We have a lack of basketball courts in our park system in Sioux City. And their goal, one of their goals is to increase the opportunities for playing basketball. And this just seemed like a, because of the terrain and the way the, the park is laid out, a good candidate to have a basketball court.
And it's not just people from, from Leeds that would be playing basketball there, I wouldn't think. If they knew there was a nice basketball court.
Right.
Be my gift.
Well, and my thing that we talked about as well, Matt, yesterday, when I was bothering you on your Sunday, sorry, was that there are other places in Leeds that have more playground equipment and more shelter as well, right?
Yeah, there's the Leeds, the Leeds Park, more towards Floyd Boulevard, yes.
Yeah. So I mean, my thought is... So I mean, my thought is, I understand what you're saying, that people on the survey said.
All this in the Leeds Park is a shelter though, and then the playground equipment across from the splash pad. But I mean, if they wanted to donate a, a basketball court, why don't they do it down off of Jefferson where the baseball field is down there? Rather than up in a park area that's, you know, half of the park is all hill up above. So the lower part is the only place where you could have the basketball court, then where are you gonna put anything else?
There's room for all three and I have a.
There has to be room. The, the swimming pool was bigger than what a basketball court would be there. I, I haven't been by that park in a long time, but there has to be room for what he's talking about, Terry. Now, if you had a swimming pool, you have to have room for a basketball court and there was, there's always was ground off to the west of that beside, so there definitely has to be room for it. There's almost as much area up there as there is down where the splash pad is. It's about the same amount.
But what I didn't understand is why, if they send out a survey wanting to know what the people in Leeds wanted and they wanted to do what the people in Leeds preferred, then why would they want to put a basketball court?
Because we don't have funding in this fiscal year and it was one of the priorities and we found a group that would be willing to do it for free. Why would we turn that down? You, you may not want that, but obviously somebody up there did because it came in fourth.
It came in fourth, but how many votes were on the basketball court?
I don't know.
But the other way to look at it is they, they voted for playground equipment, right?
Right.
So they're gonna get that. It's just not happening immediately. And they voted for a shelter house, right?
Yeah, that was.
And they're gonna get that.
Shelter house was first, I think, the, the playground equipment was second.
And I think that's awesome. I'm glad that they won that. And I think that we should be really thankful that Sunnybrook is willing to do the basketball courts, that we can still focus our money on providing the other two amenities. Is how I would look at it. I mean, I don't think it's we have to look in isolation. If we can have all three and say, look, we sent you a survey where we said, give us your number one choice out of four options, and never mind, we'll do all, we'll do three out of the four options. We'll give you all three out of four instead of just giving you one.
You talk to the people of Leeds, it wouldn't be because the ones, everybody that I talked to doesn't want a basketball court up there.
Okay.
I have not, and the park board has not heard one single person that does not want the basketball court at Carlin Park.
Well, meet him, it's Mr. Rose, is it?
Besides Terry.
Okay, I'm good.
Terry, is it an issue that the park is primarily in a residential neighborhood that they don't want the, because I, I can't imagine also that they wouldn't want a basketball court, but I'm wondering if, if that's a bigger problem than actually having a basketball court?
That's the main part of it, yeah.
Well, you're gonna have a shelter, uh, you're gonna have playground equipment, that you're gonna have people up there.
Yeah, you're gonna have people up there, just like you did with the pool.
But what difference does it matter if they're playing basketball?
But you're gonna have a different, you're gonna have a different group too. You're not gonna have any of the older people that came to the pool with their kids or whatever. You're just gonna have a lot of young kids playing basketball up there.
Is there, is there something wrong with that?
What was the problem?
Because that's a problem, because you're alluding that that's a problem, and that's a problem for me, the way you're alluding to that. Because I'm all for young kids being up in that park playing basketball.
Well, that'd be great if it was more, you know, the area was more covered off, but then it's not. I mean, it's just pretty much open to everybody's backyards.
Terry lives right next to the pool. We are proposing to put the basketball court as far away from his house and any other, any other houses as possible.
Which there's room to do.
Yes.
Does that park have hours?
It's, uh, nine o'clock PM.
They have hours, they're only posted up above on 46th Street. They're not posted down at the entrance to Carlin Park.
But we can, I'm sure we can do that.
Yeah, and right now there's not a reason to post anything.
Yeah, no, I understand.
All right, anyone else to be heard? Number nine is a resolution authorizing final payments to Nebcon for the fiber optics project. Ten is a resolution authorizing the police department to accept the burn justice assistance grant for the tri-state drug task force. Eleven are civil penalties and suspension. A is a resolution setting a hearing on a $1,500 civil penalty or 30-day suspension of a cigarette permit to Sarge's Mini Mart, 2329 West Second Street for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. B is a resolution setting a hearing of, on a $1,500 civil penalty or 30-day suspension of a cigarette permit to By E Sig and Vape Lounge, 3407 Singing Hills Boulevard for violation of the Iowa cigarette laws. Twelve are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for construction of the Bridgeport West Improvements Project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for construction of the Airport Roadway Reclamation Project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Cone Park Splash Pad and Ice Rink Project. Thirteen are actions relating to agreements and contract. A is a resolution approving an amendment number one to the Engineering Services Agreement for Veeamster and Ken for the Tyson Event Center Site Repair Project. B is a resolution approving amendment number two for Consulting Services Agreement with Smith Group JJR for the Chris Larson Park Riverfront Development Project. C is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Snyder and Associates for green space improvements at 1400 Ingleside Avenue and 803 14th Street. D is a resolution awarding a consulting agreement to Short Elliott Hendrickson for the Big Sioux Highway 12 Trail Project. E is a resolution approving a contract for transportation purpose services with the South Sioux City. F is a resolution approving a contract with Bainbridge Construction for the Street Repairs, 414 11th Street and 2219 Terrace Place Project. G is a resolution approving a contract with Knife River Midwest for the Runway 1331 Aircraft Arresting System Upgrade Project at the Sioux Gateway Airport. H is a resolution approving a contract to Bainbridge Construction for the 30th Street and Pierce Street Intersection Reconstruction Project. I is a Resport West Roadway Improvements Project Phase Project. Fourteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution in granting permit to Fiber Com to operate underground cable along 36th Street, Hamilton and Grandview Boulevard and onto private property at 3501 Jones Street. B is a resolution announcing the intent to accept the proposal of AP for the sale, of Sioux City for sale, wait for a public hearing.
Mayor, I need to abstain on that item, conflict of interest.
C is a resolution proposing to sell 2601 Vine Avenue. The petitioners, Anthony Sayes Valasquez. Fifteen are appointments to boards and commissions and committees. A is a motion appointing Gail Amet to the Arts Center Board of Trustees to replace the balance of the three-year term expiring December 31st, 2017, replacing Helen Glazer and reappointing Gail Amet to a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2020. B is a motion appointing Dave Silverberg to the Planning and Zoning Commission Board of Adjustment for a five-year term expiring June 30th, 2022, replacing Ryan Ross. C is a motion reappointing Mary Martin to the Transit Board Advisory, Transit System Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2020. City Council weighs that policy that no person shall serve more than two consecutive terms.
Oh, I have a question. Um, going back to planning and zoning, how come that's a five-year term and, and some of these other boards are?
State law, I think, isn't it? State law.
Oh, okay.
Easy answer, I guess.
Can't argue that.
Yeah.
Eighteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list if you have any questions. City clerk requests a motion to amend the consent agenda by adding two applications to the cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. Central Mark 1203 Triview Avenue, which is a renewal, and Save-A-Lot 1713 Pierce Street. Both the current permits expire June 30th, 2017, but the applications were received after the agenda deadline. So do we have to make a motion to do that?
Correct.
I'll move that.
Second.
We'll all jump on it.
Yeah, we, put us all down.
Waters?
Aye.
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 Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Seventeen's applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. City clerk requests a motion to amend the consent agenda by adding an application for beer and liquor license. On-premise sales, class C liquor license, Galaxy Grill and Event Center, 1951 Leach Avenue Suite 201 Renewal. B is Galaxy Grill and Event Center, 1401 Xena Drive Transfer. Current liquor license expires June 30th, 2017. I'll move that.
Second.
Capron?
Aye.
Crickin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Eighteen.
On seventeen A1A, I need to abstain on that one. Thank you.
Eighteen are receipt a minute, see the list come forward if you have any questions. This concludes the consent agenda. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? Seeing none, we'll vote electronically.
Yes.
Pass is five zero. Nineteen's a resolution approving a final plat, replat lots one and two prevails addition. Petitioner Darrell prevail. P and Z recommends approval. Motion is requested to defer till July 10th, 2017. I'll move that.
Second.
Pass is five zero. Twenty's a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Engineering Design Associates for the Tyson Event Center Arena LED Lighting Project. I'll move that.
Second.
Pass is five zero. Citizen concerns, any citizen who would like to be heard, please come forward. State your name and address, speak loudly into the microphone.
Is this the time I can take for this regular citizen concerns? Okay, thank you. I would like to begin by thanking the council for taking time to address citizen concerns. The concern I will address is a possible impending healthcare crisis with the closing of Planned Parenthood. A few of us here, myself included, were invited to attend a brainstorming session there to help with ID. Oh, sorry.
We need, we need your name, we need your name and address too.
Oh, sure, Jackie Selish, 5414 Bushnell. We hope we passed on a few good ideas, but much to our dismay, we were told our Sulan Community Health Center is not prepared for the additional patients they will more than likely require after June 30th. Also, the expected wait time to see a provider there is about three weeks to a month. The urgency of the matter was made crystal clear when we were told Planned Parenthood serves about 5,000 people and a large majority of them are seeking basic services such as STD testing, mammograms, birth control, annual exams, et cetera. We left the meeting wondering what we could do to help. One thing I did was bring the concerns to my local house representative, but none of my questions were answered. A few of us went as a group just this past Friday and met with Jerry Self, Senator Ernst's Regional Director. He told us he thought there were possibly some nonprofits working together in Sioux City to address this concern. However, when he shared the names of them, neither are operating as healthcare clinics. He told us we should address our city council, so here we are. One of the aspects I admire most about Planned Parenthood is they are able to provide excellent care for free if needed to people who cannot afford services. I ask you, who is going to replace them when we lose this clinic? Who is going to be able to see patients on the day they walk in the door? We are hoping this issue will be resolved and nobody in this community will suffer as a result of losing an affordable clinic. However, we also hope nobody in our surrounding communities will suffer either. Sioux City is surrounded by smaller rural communities that also depend on services at Planned Parenthood. In fact, Planned Parenthoods are known for serving rural populations. As a result of poor decisions made at the national level are fully realized and the burden of providing services at smaller rural clinics becomes too much and they close, the people will look to Sioux City to help them. Sioux City needs to be proactive in addressing a possible impending healthcare crisis. Our city will be looked at to be a leader and we have high expect, expectations for our leaders to address the problem. Ignoring the problem could result in STD and HIV outbreaks, even higher teen pregnancy rates, an increase of chronic diseases due to the lack of early detection, among many other conditions as well, all leading to a decline in the overall health of our fellow citizens. We implore you to seek answers for our concerns. We are seriously worried for the people of this community and others when they are not able to find much-needed affordable healthcare services. Again, thank you for your time and consideration.
I, I don't under, just tell me the, tell me why Joni Ernst Fieldman sent you to us?
Well, the questions that we had, he didn't feel like he was able to answer them and we asked him, who else should we talk to? And he said, you should go talk to your city council.
I can hardly wait till I see him next time. And so you're concerned about funding or you're concerned about?
Well, the fact that, that clinic will be closing on the 30th of this month and the main.
The clinic up here?
Well, the Planned Parenthood Clinic will be closing, yes.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand, okay.
Right, the concern is, one of the things that that clinic is known for is providing services for low-income people. They have a significant number of people they serve and right now, our Sulan Community Health Center will, is supposed to be the funnel for those patients, but they're saying right now, we're at capacity. We might not be able to serve these people. We won't be able to serve these people.
I understand, okay.
Where are they gonna go?
How about Sulan District Health? Have we talked to them?
I, I'm not, they were, I had not had a chance to talk to that yet.
They don't provide very much, just shots and that, right?
They do vaccinations, yeah.
But maybe they have some information that might help. I mean, I don't know what you'd do if Sulan Community.
It's the, I mean, the city council's powerless to do anything about that. And the federal senate is, is the one that basically did this and the state legislature. Not kicking the can down the road, we just don't have any. In Iowa, the healthcare's always been provided by the state or through state agencies. It's never been a local issue, so I don't know how, I don't, I don't know what our solution can be, I guess. I don't understand what we could be doing and I'm, I'm amazed, diminish what you're trying to say, but I, I just don't know what role the city can have in that.
No, I.
Now I understand your concern.
I just, I, I'm worried.
I, I appreciate that.
Of the consequences and, and you can't say, I wasn't told.
No, no, that's fine.
It seems to me maybe a logical step would be to meet with the area, uh, state representatives when they meet, like on Saturday mornings, they have public meetings once a month, I think, or maybe.
Not anymore.
They're not, well, no, they're out of, they're out now, but they're still available. I mean, you, you can contact, uh, those who are state senators or.
But there's nothing that's gonna happen because they took out a budget.
No, I know, but they, they gotta start planning for.
Yeah, and I addressed that in what I spoke about, I did. And he answered nothing, not one single question. I tried. Because that would be the, where you would start.
And Jackie, I guess I feel, I feel the same way. I appreciate you coming here and sharing your concern and I, I share a lot of those concerns. I feel the exact same way and I think it's a travesty, especially for our community. I mean, you look at the different Planned Parenthood facilities across the state that are being cut and we're one of the only ones on this side of the state. Where do people go?
I know.
What do they do? You know what, here's the answer, let's flood our ERs. You know, let's send everyone to places that they have to wait for weeks. Never mind, let's wait till everyone has STDs or unplanned pregnancies because they can't get the free service anymore. I, I think it's terrible and I guess, I'm with the mayor, I don't know what in the world we could ever do. Um, I know, I called people, I called my senators and people that I was upset with and the best answer I have is vote. Best answer I have is vote. Because we're, yeah, whatever.
Sorry, thank you.
That's okay, but thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Better find somebody who can provide some money.
Anyone else to be heard? What's that? Just, just please, because there's people listening and the only reason I'm asking, just say your name and address.
Ned Hopkins, 617 Pierce, Willigis Building, downtown 51101. I think you can take a stand, other cities have. I, I realize, I realize in the state of Iowa, it becomes more difficult, but Seattle, LA, Chicago, New York, just like with the climate change, they have taken a stand and are considering putting money towards this. Uh, we can vote, but we've got a year and a half. The, the facility closes the end of June, and whether, um, whether or not religiously you agree or disagree, the fact is, we are a fairly poor community, and those services are used a great deal. And I think as a council, a city council, you can take a stand. Whether we get money or funding or anything, you can morally, um, take a, a stand on this issue. And as the city of Sioux City, we find it incredibly alarming being on the western part of the state. Again, we are losing services that won't be lost in other parts of the state, and, and we're a city who probably needs it more. That's all. I think you can take a stand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Pete, anything? Yeah, I'm just, uh, one thing real quickly, and, and that came up when the citizens talked about Cook Park. We had three of them that addressed repeatedly the problem with homeless or transients, drug dealers, and the maintenance of the park. Trash cans, restrooms, uh, lights don't work. I'm, I'm a little confused and confounded by all of it. I, I think it's an issue that the police department should had, have an active, uh, participation in. I know that they do problem-oriented policing, and they can come up with an action plan to address those issues. Seems to me the park, at least based upon the information we heard tonight, would be much likely to be used, uh, more likely to be used if these issues, uh, were addressed. Certainly more than we want, and if there's issues that are causing people to stay away, then we need to address.
Well, I'm gonna go there and step on the policeman, police toes, but the sheriff has offered time and time again to use those reserve officers, and we have an unwillingness on the part of our police department to do that. We're not gonna add police, but in the summertime, we do use them around the hard rock and places where we have issues, and it worked very well. But your police are resistant, your former brothers in blue are resistant, because it somehow says, we're not gonna get additional officers, and that is correct. We're not gonna get additional officers, so why is there a hesitation to use those? They're deputized, they have the ability to make arrests, they turn, they have the ability to relieve your police officers if they make an arrest, so they can move on to the next case. Why is there that resistance?
I, you know, I, I can't answer that, Mayor. I wish I could, and I don't know that there's a resistance based upon the argument that they want more police officers. I think they recognize the work that they're doing, um, has been effective over the long haul, because nationally or statewide statistical data is, crime is down, but, uh, I would agree with you that I think it's a viable source of.
Absolutely. They can run through those parks, they got four-wheelers, they're better set up to do it than we are.
And, and as I've said many times in the past, uh, police have this marvelous capacity to influence the behavior of people. And they can't do it if they're not present. And I just know that, I'm confident that they want to address the problem. Maybe they're not as certain that there is a problem as the citizens are, but generally, when citizens come forward and are willing to share, there's an issue.
I agree.
There's an issue, and that's one of the reasons I, you know, I, I think I've slowed down here recently, but it's one of the issues, I like to go to neighborhood meetings, because they're not bashful. They tell you the exactly what's going on and what needs to be done, and, and I just, I don't know what the solution is, but if maybe during your meetings with department heads, you can share that the citizens came to the meeting, they had concerns, and, and can we develop a plan to address their concerns?
Well, we could get ahold of Dave Drew and have him set it up. I mean, if, they're vulnerable here.
Yeah, I, I think Dave and, and Chief Young probably can have some dialogue. I think that's, wouldn't hurt a thing, but, but clearly, there are people who believe that it's not a safe environment, and none of us should want that, and I know we don't. So we just, we just need to step up and say, hey, we need some help. Let's get something done here.
I agree.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, I need, Glenn, I need you to come up here a minute. Um, I got an email just a while ago from a girl, and she was talking about the accident, accident that was at, on Lakeport and Glen, that a kid got killed.
Motorcycle.
Motorcycle accident. Um, she was wondering if there's any thought that maybe we could put lights up. She said it's very, very danger, dangerous intersection, and her husband's also a mail carrier, and it's even difficult for him to get across sometimes, so.
There is a, there's a.
Yeah, what's the intersection? Well, it's Lakeport and Glen.
Oh, there's traffic lights there.
It's a signalized intersection already.
Hey, so what, I don't know what she's talking about then.
It's, it was in the middle of the day, I believe, wasn't it? Yeah, yes. You know, does that have, that doesn't have a dedicated turn lane, does it?
She feels the lights need to be upgraded and to, to a protected intersection with arrows.
There's not a left-hand turn lane.
Yeah, let's just talk about arrows.
And it wouldn't justify a, a left turn, a dedicated left turn thing.
Okay. Okay, well, she, she's never been to the city council.
What does justify that?
You, you wouldn't have the traffic count. You'd have to have the traffic counts, and I, I drive through that intersection every day. It's.
Is that still, is that still an old highway, too? You'd have to get, is that?
No, no, that's city road.
Okay, because it used to be a.
Yeah, it's been turned off, it's our jurisdiction.
Okay, so there's nothing that, that can be done?
For an arrow, and it already is a lighted intersection.
It's a horrible accident, but, I mean, in the middle of the day, if something had to go wrong, I don't know why.
Well, I think, I don't think it was his fault, the way I understand it.
It is, the accident's still under investigation.
Yeah, shut up, Rhonda. Okay.
But any driver can make a, can make a bad decision and cause a traffic accident.
Right, right. Okay. Hopefully she's watching, otherwise I'll.
Um, all I would say was, uh, great weekend of events, Rib Fest and a couple other ones were a lot of fun, and then, um, just make sure everyone goes to the big parade, Mardi Gras Festival.
When is that?
Right around the corner.
Thursday.
You're not going, huh?
Six o'clock.
You're not going?
The fest, or the.
Miss that parade.
Gala, or whatever you wanna call it.
The Trolley.
Yeah, and then we're in the parade, and that's at what time?
That's at six.
It says staging at four thirty and the parade at six, but.
The clock. Four thirty, I'm not gonna be there until four thirty.
How, how was the weather down in, um, Lake Charles? Wasn't there some concern that they may not even be able to come? I assume they're coming?
They are coming, yes, yes.
They headed bad.
That's Thursday.
Anyway, we'll see you there on Thursday. I'm excited for that. And then Saturday is Saturday in the Park, um, so I would encourage everyone to attend that and enjoy a, a free amenity that we offer our community. I think it's a pretty great time, music and food vendors and all kinds of stuff, so I'm looking forward to it.
Five thousand cars at this Iowa State Fairgrounds, so it's a tough.
I got one more thing to add.
Good guys.
On Saturday?
Yeah. Yes, Rhonda, one more.
I wanna pass on to the Parks of Rec, what a great job they did with the Civil War.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
With the cemetery headstones. I've had quite a few people call and very, very impressed, so. And Bob, you were there.
So Alex and I were there, they should be impressed. That was very well done. Very well done by everybody that had a part in it, I thought.
Well, and that was my thing, is I've continually, I said this about the DC trip, and I would say this again, I, I'm impressed with the staff that we have at our city, that they would go to that length. I mean, to get twenty new headstones to represent soldiers that died in the Civil War there, I thought, and I, I don't even know if they thought, they said that they thought going into it, they hoped they got four or five, and they got twenty new headstones. So I, I think that's the dedication that our, the people of this city and the people working for us have. So, no, I'm with Bob, I was, I was very impressed as well.
I think Tim Tuschel was very active in that, very passionate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but Roy Lynn from, uh, Crexenville was the one that said they could do it, and then, uh, Lisa with Tim, right? Was her name Lisa, right?
I think so.
And then, uh, no, Lisa Robinson was with the county veterans, right?
Yes.
I don't know, and then, I don't know Kim's secretary, but she was really, the two ladies just really did all of, or a lot of the legwork, and they really did a lot of legwork.
They were saying it was like eighty-four emails, or a hundred and some emails.
Hundred and eighty-six emails or something, so.
And they were dressed up in Civil War.
There, and there were all kinds of, there, there, you have to trace your lineage to a Civil War veteran. Of the Grand, the Grand Army of the Republic, G A R. We learned what that meant, but it was a, I mean, it was kind of a nice area anyway, but that sign that whoever made it, that.
That was, um, Denny, Denny Carlson made that.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive to, on the entrance. It's a brand-new entrance up the hill to it, so.
And city staff cleaned it up and.
Yeah.
Cleaned away brush, and actually, I should give a shout out, I don't know who it was, but city staff was there, helped me get up over the ramps and, or the curbs and everything, so I could be there, so. Thank you, whoever's staff that was, I really appreciated that.
Excellent.
But that was a great event. Well-attended, too, I thought, or at least there were quite a few people there.
Tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock, the city manager and I are having our organizational meeting of the senior advisory committee.
Oh, that's your first one?
I'm excited about it.
Awesome, good.
Yep, we'll start, we'll kick that one off and.
Good, good job.